And a national survey in California ranked among the worst states to do business in. And it was stated because of the tax and regulatory climate as well as the quality of the workforce, which is sad, and the quality of the living environment, mostly the cost of living here compared to our wages. I know we're taxing the wealthy, we've got extra tax on them, but we can't just tax the wealthy forever to pay for our education. We need to have a broader tax base in case they move away and go to a different state. So the major elements of the May revision, first off, Governor Brown back in January, when he gave his January proposal for the 14-15 budget, he offered school districts the highest funding increase in history, both in dollars and in percent, something we haven't seen before. The May revise, he's still offering that, the same, basically the same thing, very little dollar change in the May revise. However, the state did revise its revenue projections and found $2.4 billion more than But that's over a three-year span, the 12, 13, 13, 14, 14, 15 combined. And those funds are going to be used to pay for the growth in Medi-Cal. A lot more people are getting Medi-Cal. And if we've got 50% of the California workers not paying personal income tax to the state, then they're probably not making enough money to maybe even get the subsidies, so they're going to be on Medi-Cal. So it's going to be paying that, about $1.2 billion is going towards that. And then establishing the rainy day fund, that's another $1.6 billion. That adds up to $2.8 billion, more than the additional funds, so some will be taken from reserves. There was a little bit more, Prop 98 funds found, quarter of a million dollars, also over that three-year span. And that's going to be paying for the revised ADA projections for education. So the more students that are going, the more the state needs to pay. And finally, one of the big things on the May revise was the governor's plan to fully fund the STIRS liability. I'll be talking about that more in a little bit.
Can I ask just a quick question? So what if the ADA doesn't go up, what would they do with that extra money?
Probably get added to funds that weren't used and come in the following year when they kind of revise how much money they've got, or maybe it will go towards the reserve. Hard to say. So Proposition 98, for the 14-15 years, nearly $61 billion.
Could I just interject?
Yes.
I read an article recently in the paper that talked about the governor's proposal to fully, wanting to fully fund the CalSTRS liability and that the biggest amount of money to make this happen is going to come out of our school district budget.
I've got that on another slide.
Okay.
I will be talking about that.
Okay, yeah, but that's like, whoa.
Yeah, it's going to happen to us. So 14-15, the minimum guarantee for education is nearly $61 billion, $2.6 billion higher than it was in 13-14. That's gone up four and a half percent, which is pretty good. That is going to fund the LCFF gap in the target, from what we're getting to what the target is. And that target has increased by $737 per pupil, which is 10.7% average over the state. Now, we will be getting approximately $825 per student, so ours will be a 12.9% increase for the students, and, which is actually 12% above, same strange, you'd think it'd be 12.9, but 12% above the state average. It'll also go to paying back the remainder of those inter-fund, inter-year deferrals, apportionment deferrals, where we're always like waiting till the next year to get our money. We're still doing that, but this will pay the last five and a half billion dollars. So that's a one-time expense, because once it's brought back into the new year, it's, the loan has been paid off. And then we'll, they'll reinstate the five, the plan is to reinstate the 5.59 apportionment schedule. That is, is you get 5% in the month of July, 5% in the month of August, and then you get the other 90% broken out with the remaining 10 months of the year, so throughout the year. So you get it evenly, and that's from state aid. And of course, state aid is important to us, because we don't get property taxes. It all, that's another story. It all gets eaten up by the negative ERAF, so we are, we have to get it through state aid. Categorical programs, very few that we have, the ones that we have in Jefferson, of course, special ed and child nutrition, the COLA will be applied to that, and that is less than 1%, .85 COLA. Okay, so first I'm going to talk about the CalSTRS funding of, fully funding of the liability. So to begin with, there's approximately, it's underfunded by about $80 billion. And that is growing by approximately $22 million a day, for every day that it's not funded.
I think my brain just broke.
A lot of money, just as social security was supposed to run out, and we talked, they're working on that. They're going to run out of money in STIRS in the year 2046, if nothing is done, and the calculations, if the calculations are correct. It could be earlier, it could be later, who knows? But those are the calculations. So the governor proposes to fully fund CalSTRS by the year 45-46, fiscal year 45-46, just in time. But then that will be fully funded. So as it goes on, we'll have less and less to put on our financial statements of a liability that the district has. We talked about that at an earlier meeting. So how does the governor propose to fully fund this liability? Well, three components, and it's basically all the contributions. The state has been contributing just over 3%, and it's going to, a little bit more than double over the next three years, to 6.33%. Employers have been funding 8.25%. Over the next seven years, that's going to jump to 19.1%. It will more than double, as you can see. The math is pretty easy there. And I will be showing you another slide to show you what those dollars actually look like for us. And then the third component is the employees, who are currently paying 8%. They are going to go up to 10.25% in the next, within the next three years. Now, these are, except for our employees, our certificated employees that started January 1st, 2013, or later, they will be capped at 9.21%. Their benefits when they retire are not as rich as the earlier employees. And this is all supposed to start July 1st, so just over a month away. It was a surprise, apparently there was like a gag order, because nobody was allowed to talk about it, and we just found out like overnight.
It's so awful for the employees.
I will be going back to that other part, but right now I'm still talking about the kind of bigger picture. I'll talk about Jefferson in a bit. So I wanted to review the LCFF, Local Control Formula Funding Formula calculation, because it's, we need to go over it on a regular basis, just to refresh. So there's the base grant, and the base grant is by grade span, so you see TK through three, four through six, seven through eight for us, and of course, nine through 12 for high school. Included in that base grant this year is, and, by the way, this is to determine, at the bottom, the target. Okay, this isn't what we're getting. So now, from now on, when you see COLA, we're not getting the COLA, the COLA is being added to the target. Not to say we're not getting more money, but you can't look at the COLA and say, that's what we're getting. That's what's being added to the target. So a 0.85% COLA is being added to the target. In addition, we are going to get the TK through three, class size reduction, adjustment of $729 per enrollment, and that's not per ADA, that's per enrollment. Classes have to be 24 to one or smaller, for the most part, there are some exceptions. So after the base grant, we have add-on grants, and we've talked about supplemental grant and concentration grant. Well, those, both of those grants are based on what we're calling the Enrollment Eligibility Percentage, that's what that EE percent is. That is based on the percent of district students who are free and reduced, English learners, or foster youth. And we call, we're calling it the unduplicated count. That means if you're free and reduced, and you're a foster student, you only get to, can't be counted once, towards that percentage. So you figure out what that percentage is, and I've got it later, but we're at 73.7%. And you take the, for the supplemental, you take the base grant amount, for whichever grid level it is, actually, never mind the grid level, it's just the percentage. You take the base grant amount, and you multiply it by .2, so 20% of that, then you multiply it by your percent of unduplicated count. That ends up being your supplemental grant, concentration grant, you take the base grant, you times it by 50%, and then you times it by your, your unduplicated account, which is above 55%. So where we're at 73.7%, you subtract out the 55, and you'd end up with, what, 18.3%, something like that, additional funds that we will get as a result. Those get added together, that's that S and C supplemental and concentration grant amounts that you see in the LCAP that we have to spend. Those amounts have to be spent on the students that are generating it. So we have to provide additional services above and beyond the regular education. So those amounts together, added on with the home-to-school, home-to-school transportation funds, as well as the TIG funds, those, homeschool transportation and TIG never grow, they're just a flat amount, it's going to, you know, in many years it'll become less and less of a percentage, because that amount will never change. Add all those together, and that becomes our target. And then comes the funding of that target. So now we're going to get to Jefferson. Our next year's budget and the multi-year projection are built on the addition of the .85% to the COLA, as well as the out-years, we've got the different COLAs. All these COLAs will be added one, one year at a time to that target, that base grant target. So it'll up the target each year, so we're using what has been recommended. And then there's what's called that gap funding. So in other words, we've determined what our target is, it's up here, and what we're getting is here. And the difference between what we're getting and what we're supposed to get is called our gap. And so they're funding a percentage of that gap. So for the 2014-15 year, they plan on funding 28.05% of that gap. So it's not 25, 28.05% more revenues, it's 28.05% of the gap, which for us is a, oh, 13%, I want to say. I'm not, don't quote me on that one, I didn't write that down. So in our multi-year projection, yes.
Is there anything that would make the target go up besides COLA? I guess it's law.
Yeah, the state could decide they want to just increase it more than COLA. But right now, that's the formula they're using. Yeah, they might get more money and decide to do that.
All right.
They might, yeah, it's quite possible.
Right, all right.
So for the multi-year projection that you will be seeing as part of our budget proposal, we are using for the out-years, a gap funding of 7.8, 8.4, which are, these are the official ones for the financials, but in my presentation, I always add one extra year that's not in the financials, and that will also be at 8.4. This is what School Services is recommending, to be conservative, because in the past, we had deficit reduction, right? We, there was the deficit factor that reduced things. And so the optimistic amount, the state is, is estimating funding levels of 33.95% and 21.67%, and they don't give this year out here how much it's going to be. But this is what they are estimating the funding to be. So a lot of school districts are using that, and they can go ahead and use that. It's just a multi-year projection, right? It's not the actual budget year, it's a multi-year projection, and it's kind of gives us a conservative way, are we going to be able to meet our financial obligations? And I'm going to tell you right now, to warn you, we talked about at the meeting before, when we were going over the LCAP, and I was going over the second interim, that we would be using reserves to help fund some of the expenditures that we have in the LCAP. And when you see that budget, we will be deficit spending throughout the ongoing years, about between two and two and a half million dollars a year, until that target catches up to, the funding of that target catches up to our spending. But I want to remind you that the budget is built on these conservative amounts. So next time, the next meeting, I'll be showing you the multi-year projection, and it's going to have deficit spending. If these amounts do come to fruition, and if they are what is funded, we won't have a deficit, we'll have surplus. So, but until we know, until next January, and the governor comes out in 2015 with his January proposal, we're using these numbers. When he comes out with his January proposal, if he comes out with this number, then that's what we'll use to start building our following year budget. But for the multi-year projection, we're just doing it this way, so that we kind of see.
Worst case.
Kind of the worst, I mean, the worst cases, you know, that we all fall off the earth.
Right.
But, so it'll be very conservative, I'm just warning you on that, but it's something that you guys already know, and we had discussed.
But also, but isn't that use of the reserves to be voted on each year?
Yes.
All right, so technically it's not.
Yes. Remember, we give $2.4 million extra to the sites, to be able to use it towards the students that need it. Just pulling that back alone would cover the deficit spending. So it's, it's an option, it's a tool we have.
Was it safe to say then, it's almost like floating, as opposed to deficit spending?
Well, I would call it using our reserves for a good purpose. We have.
That sounds good.
The district, the district has decided, instead of waiting, to get all of the S and C grant funds, and to start providing the students with the services that we feel that they need, that, so that the ones who are going through now can get the services now.
All right.
And we will wait for that money to catch up, because we can afford to do that. And so rather than wait three or four years, in order to be able to provide those services, the discussion was, at least for next year, that we were willing to start these services now, knowing that we are likely to get the funds, we are likely to receive the funds before we have to make a decision to say, maybe we better cut, or reduce the services, or, you know, not, because we're, we're not, the plan isn't to add as much as we've done each year forward, it's to maintain what we've got, and increase some, but not, the amount that we've added for next year is huge.
All right.
So then, there's the EPA, so that's the Education Protection Account, that's where the dollars go from the Prop 30 that was passed, that's going to help education, it goes into this fund, and we get the money from that. So 18.19% of the monies that we're going to get from the state aid is going to come from this EPA, and that's going to be distributed to us quarterly. So that affects our cash flow, but our cash flow's okay, we're, you know, obviously, we're doing well in the future, hopefully it'll still be okay, I do believe it will And then our, our ADA projections, we're basing it on our P2, which is our, that's what we get our money from, our P2, and that's like the middle of, of April, what is our average daily attendance at the middle of April, that's what we're, that's what our money is based on. At the end of the year, it's not based on that, there are some special ed fundings that are based on that, but the money we, our basic money, our LCFF money that we get is based on our P2. So again, we're using this P2, this year's P2, into next year, and all, and the following years.
Does that, what does P2 mean? Is that period two, or what?
Yeah, well, no, it's a second apportionment.
Second apportionment.
Second principal apportionment.
All right. Thanks.
Some questions might be better not asked.
That's the P, since apportionment doesn't start with a P. And then we're using our unduplicated count of 73.7%, which is affording us the ability, that's why we're above the state average.
Yeah.
It's why we're not below the state average. So finally, we're above, which is really nice.
Yeah.
And that's what, we're using that, we're using that in the out-years, they will blend, it'll be a rolling average of three years. There's no real reason for us to expect that it's going to change any, as we did last year, or this year, should I say, we had that Free and Reduced campaign. I do believe that Aramark will be presenting to us at the next meeting, and I do believe they're going to offer to support that campaign again, since we as a district cannot offer prizes.
Right.
Aramark can, and I believe that will be a little surprise they have for us, so act surprised, okay?
All right.
And then, of course, included in next year's budget, as well as the multi-year projection, we have increased the STIRS and PERS contribution to what it's supposed to be.
We have to do, yeah.
So that will be in there too. And then, of course, our multi-year, our, our budget for next year will have to support the LCAP, which is supporting it, and that, that's what we've been working on, and that's what you've been looking at. So, so now the fun part, the STIRS, and I throw, threw PERS in here too, though PERS is not part of the May revise, PERS is a separate decision-making organization, but that's going up too. So PERS is for the classified people, STIRS is for the certificated people. And as I said, it's going to go from eight point, STIRS is going to go from 8.25 to 2014-15, it's going to be nine and a half percent. 2021, 19.1%. This is how it goes up each year. PERS, right now, we're at like 11.441 or 411%. Next year, we'll go to 1177, and it'll end up at 20.4%. It's higher, but we have less salaries that are paid from PERS. So, so what I want you to understand here is, there's the STIRS amount, the PERS amount, the total. This total is not the total amount of PERS and STIRS we're paying, this is the amount that we're going to pay in addition to what we're paying now. So right here, it says, you know, additional over 13-14, if, if our salaries were to remain constant, I mean, I had to give some, something, I got, I got, the target wasn't going to be moving for this. So if, if everybody made exactly the same money as we're making this year, and there was no step and no column, or anything like that, which we know is not going to be true, this is what the extra yearly cost would be. So in next year's budget, we're including $364,000, $365,000 more into the budget as expenditures for PERS and STIRS. And then the multi-year projection, we've got this, $862,000, $1,476,000, $2,031,000. On that multi-year projection, so when you see it, it goes up to here, the multi-year projection doesn't have these on it right now, it just says it's up to here. So you will see, when we see that deficit spending of two and a half million dollars in approximately, I think it's like 2.3 in 17-18, that's already including this $2 million here. All right? You know what that says? Remember, we were talking about how the gap, the funding of the gap was going to pay for these additional expenditures that we were having from the LCAP? Well, if it wasn't for this, we would.
That would be true.
Right. Even with that conservative funding of the LCAP, we would already be meeting, nearly meeting, nearly not deficit spending, because it, you know, I believe it's like 2.3 million that we're going to be, you know, in the multi-year projection that I show you next month, next, yeah, next month. So if this wasn't there, but, you know, thank goodness, we are going to be able to afford to pay for that. And then we'll still have an additional $1.6 million by the time we get from here to here, to add to it. So, in costs. So the legislature has to still pass this, but if they don't, we, we've got STIRS that is going to be unfunded, you know, it's, it's not fully funded. Okay, so concerns and considerations, all right. Don't forget that Prop 30 is a temporary tax, voted in 2012. Those taxes will expire. The extra one-quarter percent of sales tax will expire in 2016. That'll affect the 2016-17 budget. Now, in our multi-year projection, we did not take away money in 16-17 because of this expiration, all right? So voters may vote to extend it, we don't know. Personal income tax on the highest income earners will go away in 2018, so the 18-19 year. Hopefully by then, the state will figure out other ways of making money. Hopefully, we'll have more job creation, good jobs, where people are paying personal income tax, and we won't have to potentially push the high-wage earners out of the state. So the impact of the STIRS and PERS contributions is huge among districts, I mean, that, that's the talk of the town these days, that's the greatest fear. I'm happy to be at Jefferson, because I do know there are some districts that can barely meet their obligations right now.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a good place to be. Thank you. Also, keep in mind that we have the conservative gap funding levels that we're using, when you see it, in our, our multi-year projection. And the district needs to, the budget, the adopted budget, needs to support the LCAP. There are many high expectations to improve student achievement due to these funds, and it's going to take time for that to see, for us to see that. It's not going to happen in just one or two years. So the idea is, let's work towards and be patient while we wait for the results, but we'll always work towards those results, as we have done, by fronting the expenditures to help the kids that are in need, which is really, you know, a big percentage. So our next step, we have to, board has to pass the, adopt the budget on or before June 30th of this year, and now it includes, it's a two-step process. We used to have the public hearing and the budget adoption on the same day, the last meeting of the year, and now it needs to be done before the, before the meeting that the budget is adopted. So we will have to hold a public meeting at the next board meeting, and that, and there'll be a public meeting for both, a public hearing, for both the, the proposed budget, as well as the LCAP. And then, at a separate meeting, which will then be our second meeting in June, the board, we hope, will adopt both the, approve the LCAP and adopt the budget. Those need to be done at the same meeting. If the LCAP doesn't get approved, you cannot approve the budget. So, yeah.
Skim the ball.
I suppose you could approve the LCAP and not the budget, but you can't do it the other way around. And then the state will pass its budget, probably shortly after we do ours, but, you know, we don't have time to change it even now, we're, we're in the final stages. And, and then we'll take 40, we have 45 days to make the adjustments, if there's anything that's large, and then we'll report to you any adjustments that we made. Questions?
No, me, I have at least one. I just have, all right, so I have one general question about the good jobs. Do you have a figure for, you know, the yearly salary that would be considered a good job in order to?
No.
Bring him, no?
At least a living wage, right?
We're losing constantly businesses out of this area.
Yeah.
Going, going to Arizona, going to other places where they can make more money.
Well, Tesla is looking to open up a plant in another state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a shame.
They're batteries.
We're never gonna get back all the jobs, I doubt.
But then again, there's a lot of innovation and a lot of businesses that are starting here too, right in San Francisco and the Bay Area as well.
By the way, San Francisco, they just published, they have a four point four percent unemployment rate, so this area's good. And San Jose, they said, has the highest wages in the state.
Right. And then, oh, it just...
Unfortunately, it's not our job. You know, some of the regulations get changed that make it more desirable for businesses to come back to California, you know, they'll cut, they'll go wherever the business is gonna be good for them, so, you know, that can change.
Mm-hmm. And then, I just wanted to make a statement that, you know, when you talk about the high expectations for immediate improvement, that's gonna be based on implementation of the Common Core and whatever assessment, you know, that's, you know, the criterion that's gonna be presented, but I just think this is a good opportunity, and we're showing strategic use of our reserves, because I know it's been brought up many times, that we're sitting on these reserves. So I'm glad to see that our reserves are actually gonna go towards the services that the students really need.
But am I hearing that it's gonna be... But I'm hearing that it's just, we're gonna get that money back, we're using the money, the reserve, for us to start doing it, but then it's, we're gonna get some of the money back.
We're not...
Well, right? Is that what you said?
Not back into the reserve.
No, what's gonna happen is, the gap is gonna be funded, more, as the gap gets more funded, then it will pay for what we're going to be...
Taking out of the...
Using reserves for.
But it's not so much getting it back, it's that we won't have to keep using those reserves.
We won't have to keep using the reserves, and we'll be able to, on a yearly basis, depending on what our gap funding is, make decisions, whether it's with our bargaining units, whether it's with additional services, whether we're going to spend reserves, or put something away for something specific. By the way, in the, in the multi-year projection as well, is the reserve that we plan on having to continue to be able to support the technology, you know, that, you know, we are putting a lot of money out to buy computers and such, and we need to be able to support that to continue, so that they're still there. It's not, as we know, it's hardly a fixed asset when they don't last more than a couple of years.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Well, thanks for the good news, seems like mostly good news.
I think so.
So how does it, with the retirement, and it's going on the backs of the employees as well?
Yeah.
And it's increasing, does that mean that your salary's just gonna go to...
Yeah, it's more, yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
Means you're really not getting a salary increase if it's, you're paying more into... It's not fair.
We're increasing the salary, but the state...
The state is taking it away.
No, I know it's not our fault, I'm just saying, it's here we are trying to give the employees more money, and then, it's barely, I don't even think it's balancing what they're gonna be charged for this.
It's, yeah.
And how do they let it get us out of hand?
I'm not the person to ask.
No, I know, I know.
We need to go to Sacramento, as Mr. Otidy was saying, we need to get out there.
It's frustrating, it's frustrating.
I question whether anybody actually has the answer to that question.
No, I just venting out that... I don't consider this beautiful, when I see that it's going on...
No, of course not.
Our just are paying more, and the employees are paying so much more for their retirement, they're already paying for retirement.
Mm-hmm.
It just doesn't seem fair.
Is there any other questions from the board? I have a speaker card from...
If I may?
Oh, yes.
Slide eight.
Okay.
So it looks like, just going down the right-hand column, we're increasing roughly five hundred thousand to six hundred thousand roughly per year, on average, from fourteen to fifteen, fifteen to sixteen, sixteen to seventeen, as an addition to. So those are things we should be cognitive, or cognizant of. And also, if I was reading correctly, there are, Governor Brown's goal is to pay back roughly four hundred fifty million, or add another four hundred fifty million this year to the pension fund, in which seventy-three million comes from the state, forty million comes from teachers, and three hundred thirty-seven million comes from the districts.
Okay.
And that's, I'm just like, just to put everything in perspective, those are just numbers I've been reading.
Sometimes when the numbers get so big, the perspective just completely blurs.
It's almost easier to get it when it's on the amount that our district and our teachers are dealing with, yeah, look at the amount the state's done, and you just think there's not much money in the world.
Well, if you look at the percentage, the percentage kinda tells you.
Right.
They're paying eight percent, and they're gonna be paying nineteen percent.
Nineteen is a lot.
That's a lot.
Of, of our biggest expense.
I mean, am I wrong, guys? Am I doing the math right?
Yes, you are.
You're right.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm doing it right here.
Yeah.
And then the state only goes up, you know, a little, why aren't they paying more?
Well, you know, they are, they are weak.
We'll be paying it.
We have to go to Sacramento and talk.
Okay. So, no other questions from the board, Ms. Dart?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Melinda Dart, AFT, have to make a few comments. So business has to be good for somebody, because a lot of people are paying a lot of money for a lot of houses in San Francisco and elsewhere, and we are the only state that does not tax any oil that comes out of the ground, we are the only state that doesn't do that. And Texas, a favorite of the CBOs, I looked that up, there are five hundred CBOs that have rated California as poor for business, but they've rated most highly Texas and Florida. And so, actually, Texas does tax oil that comes out of the ground, so does Alaska, they send checks to the citizens, so it's really time, if we're gonna go to Sacramento, it's time to think about that, because I think business is pretty good for Chevron, one of our partners in the district even, and, you know, it's really time that they start paying their fair share. And I don't think that they're making a mass exodus out of California either, and neither are a lot of other businesses, so. And Texas and Florida, you know, there may be a lot to admire there, but they've got a lot of people, they've got a lot of people living on minimum wage and fast food jobs, and they don't have any collective bargaining, so, you know, working people don't necessarily have a lot of rights there, so.
Yeah, we didn't say it was a good place for people.
I just had to say a few things about that. And as far as teachers' retirement, the average teacher retirement is about three thousand dollars a month, as you were all saying, teachers pay in to their own retirement and do their whole career, even if they had jobs in other careers before they went to teaching, they cannot collect social security. So SDRS is, is all teachers have, as far as any kind of security after years and years of teaching. So CalSTRS, yes, took a hit during the recession, but it's not bankrupt, in fact, it's seventy-one percent funded, and as was said, it can go until two thousand forty-four, paying out benefits. And so Brown has a plan, but it's a plan, it has not passed, and in fact, he's going to have to wrangle and, and fight with members of his own party to get it through. So I would not say that anything is a done deal there yet. Obviously, people are gonna be putting in more to CalSTRS, but it will not necessarily follow Brown's plan. So, and then I wanted to say, good job on spending the reserve for students, that's what it's there for, and especially when we have the promise of money coming in, we need to see those programs for students come back.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. So are you going to Sacramento to lobby?
Ms. Dart, count me in, I'm walking with you.
And I gotta say, you know, you can pretty well count on it, if you tax that gas, they're not gonna pick up that gas and take it to another state, you know, that's not an option.
That's true.
It's ours.
And you know, and actually, in all fairness, when you read the reports of San Francisco, they're, they're losing students in their schools constantly, because people cannot afford to live there. So while there are some rich people that can afford, you know, four million dollar house, the average, you know, average middle-class person, no longer will you see middle-class eventually in San Francisco. Can't afford to live there.
Well, they have roommates and they have multiple jobs too.
Yeah, but still, it's really hard.
Two sides to everything.
So we're losing a lot of our young people going to areas that is affordable, and it's not nearby us, because it's even falling out into Daly City. So, I don't know, we just gotta do something.
Innovate.
Yes, okay. On that happy note, moving down into, back to classified personnel, down to item six. This is approving the salary for student-parent-community liaison, it's the last paid.
Yeah, it's okay.
So this is to approve the annual salary schedule for the school-parent-community liaison position. This is a position, I believe, that we just created at the last meeting?
Uh, yes, so it's another position being funded by the LCSF.
So did, okay, now let me see if we get this correct now, we are, did we, we already approve the position?
Yes, we approved the position and the duties already, and then it went back to the Personnel Commission, now it's coming back again.
Okay, I missed one, me, I missed everything, I think, everything happened when I was gone. Okay, so then we're ready for this, okay? Alright, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, the annual salary schedule for this new position of school-parent-community liaison at fifteen point sixty, step one, through eighteen point nine six, step five, and that's it.
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
And I hope we get that filled as soon as we can, huh? It's only one position for the whole district.
No, actually, it's at several schools, it's funded through their site fund, so those schools that chose to add that position will be doing so, it may take a while till we get to test for it, because we're adding so many positions that we have a lot of testing to do.
Okay, good.
And that's a good problem to have.
Okay, that brings us to our board policies.
Byrne is not here.
Yeah, we don't actually have to have him to discuss them. I will say that if there is massive amounts of discussion, I'm going to request that we table it, because I have a flight tomorrow morning at six AM, and I'd like to get home and finish packing. If we don't have discussion, we, great, let's get this first reading done, but...
So I guess, I'd like to say let's wait, because I had some questions on this, and what I really wanna get out early is to see if we can get more information on this, is when we talk about medication for children, all the disability stuff, they talk about people that are, that are trained for it, and, but I just wanna make sure, because we have, what, one and a half or one and a quarter nurses?
Seven, five.
Yeah, well, it's kinda hard, I don't know what part of the, what part of the hundred percent is missing, but anyway, but what I see is that if, if we're gonna conform to all of this stuff that I was reading, that we have to have the people in place to take care of it.
Right.
And if not, I wanna know who's doing it and how they're training.
I motion to table this item until the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, I want, as, because, yeah.
Okay, I'll talk later. Oh, it's alright, I'm fine.
No, I'm just saying, if we're going, if we're going to not discuss it, then let's not, I was gonna say, those sound like questions that we need to send to our cabinet to get answers back for the next meeting, so that we can discuss it with something more than speculation.
Which is why it was nice when we used to all sit down as a board, looking at policies, because then we could talk about everything together, but that's okay.
Well, I thought that's what we do in these meetings when they come up, if everybody has read them and is prepared.
I read it.
Well, yeah, I know, but, I'm not saying you're not, just, you know, that's, that's the ideal of why we have it on here. Okay.
Everything's gonna just be one person long.
Let's call the question.
What question?
No, we, we moved and approved tabling the item until the next meeting, so that we can get further information.
So did we vote on it?
Yes.
Yes.
He said he called or something.
Clarification.
Okay.
Okay. So adjourn the meeting then?
And if there are any further board members, or reports from board members from meetings or committees?
I don't think we've had any committee meetings yet, have we?
No, not that I know of, but you know.
So, maybe perhaps you and I can get together and, are we on the, we're on the high school?
High school, yeah.
Maybe we should get together...
I haven't heard anything.
No, no, but we should probably get together and make, and talk about what we would like to bring to that.
Okay.
Because everyone says we have nothing to say, well, maybe we do.
Right.
That's true.
And it will, I will say, it will take some nudging to get the high school to...
Oh, trust me, I'll get it. I've never had a problem in the past.
Right. I have no cards from people wishing to further address the board. At this time then, I would like to take a moment of silence to adjourn in memory of Tim O'Reilly, brother of Marianne O'Reilly, who is a longtime teacher in our district.